The roll call, please.
Mayor Roland Dox.
Present.
Vice Mayor Mike Prophet.
Present.
Alderman Mike Cancel.
Here.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Here.
Alderman Louanna Oniger.
Here.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Present.
City Attorney Terry Hurst.
Here.
City Administrator James B. Jones.
Here.
Everybody's had a chance to take a look at the minutes from previous meeting of November 12th, 2019. They've been presented. Need approval. If you've had a chance to take a look at those, we'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Bobby second.
Bobby second. Okay. Did you get that, Sarah? Okay. All right. Proclaimations and recognition of citizens by the mayor?
We didn't win the vote. We won't vote. You didn't ask for a vote.
Okay.
I'm glad to have our student council represented from -- would y'all stand up, Mr. Smith, please, and people representing the schools? Glad y'all can be with us. That shows us this younger generation coming on. We appreciate you. Thank you all.
We did -- I did omit a vote on the approval of the minutes. We did have a motion made, and it was properly seconded. But are there questions to the motion? If not, we'll approve by the normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And all opposed. Hearing none, motion carries. No proclaimations and a recognition of citizens by the mayor at this time. And we'll now have our communications from the city administrator. Mr. Finch.
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I have to report for this month. Tina, the finance director, and I met with our auditors last week. They have completed our portion of the audit for this past fiscal year. And again, we have a clean audit. There were no findings on our part of the audit. The grammar school audit is on schedule and on time, which is also combined with ours. But everyone is aware that the comptroller is conducting an internal audit at the NUB. And we were informed by our auditors that that will delay our auditor -- or our audit being completed because they have to combine all three of the audits into one total audit. And so, we do not have a timeline on when NUB's audit will be available. And so, he said he could not project when our audit will be completed because of that. But he does know it will be delayed. So, just to make you aware of that. But also, the main thing from our perspective is that we had a clean audit for about the, I think it's the fourth consecutive year, maybe.
Good job.
That's all I have. Thank you.
No appointment of boards, commissions, or committees tonight. We will now have reports from committees, members of council, or other officers. Standard preservation have -- Gary, would you like to update us on the set scope of work, please?
Well, we were going just a little too smooth from the beginning. So, we did run into a snag. The thing on the back of this building, which I think was a stage, when they pulled the top off of it, water started running down into that, and then it was coming inside the building. So, we dug down to remove that, and it, at some point, was backfilled. There was a door and a window there, and they just kind of shoved some bricks and maybe some concrete in there to seal it up, and that's not going to work. So, it's off now, and we've got to get somebody in there to properly do that and water seal it. And then, once we do that, they can finish -- continue to -- the work on the inside continues, but those back rooms on the back, on the community center side, on the bottom level are on hold right now. But other than that, and we had -- so, we had to dip into the discretionary fund for that to pay for the mason and that sort of thing. But other than that, it still is going -- it's taking shape up there. If you want to go, if you want to go up there and take a tour, let me know. I can alert the workers to clean up a little bit because they don't have a lot of discretion about where they leave their things and their tools. So, it'd be a little bit safer if we do that. But otherwise, it's coming along. It's actually -- it's taken shape pretty well. I think Louanna's been up, and the mayor's been up a couple of times. So, and Coach went up. Yeah, you went up the day before we went.
Well, did you?
Coming together pretty good. So, hopefully.
They're working.
Yeah, hopefully, stay on schedule, and we'll be open sometime late winter, early spring.
Good deal. Thank you, Gary. Excuse me. Old business or unfinished business? A consideration of second reading of ordinance number 2019-08.
Yes, Mayor, and that's the speed limit on the playgrounds. The issue I suggested, we not move forward with that as written so that we can divide out the playgrounds and the school zones.
Item B. It's consideration of second reading of ordinance number 2019-09, amending the city of Newport municipal title 16 Streets and Sidewalks.
And Mayor, the caption of that is ordinance number 2019-09, an ordinance amending the city of Newport Municipal Code Title 16, Street and Sidewalks, et cetera. Chapter 1 miscellaneous, adding section 16-104, blowing moan grass onto city streets prohibited. We need a motion and a second.
Discussion?
Vote.
It's been discussed pretty well over the course of the last few meetings. So, we'll entertain a motion to approve that ordinance?
Make a motion to approve that ordinance.
I'll second. Okay, Mike second.
We have a motion on the board. It's been properly seconded. Are there questions to the motion? Hearing none, we'll approve by the normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And all opposed. Hearing none, motion carries. Excuse me. Moving on to new business. Consideration of resolution number 2019-09, applying for community transportation planning grant. Mr. Carter.
The resolution you have in front of you is the intent to apply for TDOT's Community Transportation Planning Grant. We just completed one. That was the corridor plan. We used state money to fund that study or that whole process, which I think ended up being around. It cost us maybe $4,500, and overall, it was around a $60,000 project. Because these studies and these -- the deliverables from these studies are pretty intensive, and they cost money. So, this is a really good way for us to have good plans in place for when we are -- and we can find it. If we can get grants to do the projects, great. If we use our own money, then when we're financially able, it helps us to move along without stepping forward and not being properly planned for it. So, I'm asking for this approval. I'll actually apply for the grant in January, and I'm not 100% certain. There's two different studies I'm interested in. I can only pick one. One's called a complete streets study, which would be mostly focused on downtown. And the other's a bike and pedestrian plan, which we have had people come to these meetings and show interest in bike lanes and whatnot. And that's definitely part of the overall thing, but that could be the next round if we go with the complete streets first. So, I'll have that announcement for you next month, too. I've not necessarily decided. Because we want to -- I won't have to know until I file the application in January. But this resolution is just a little checkmark that TDOT likes when you turn in your application that says that your council's behind it, and that once you get your, you know, how many -- whatever it costs, once you spend that money and get your plan in place, that you will work toward implementing it in your community.
All right, we need a motion, then.
Motion to approve.
Senator. All right, we have a motion to approve resolution number 2019-09. It has been properly seconded. Are there questions to the motion? If not, we'll approve by the normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And all opposed.
Thank you, Gary. If you work on that.
Thank you. Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Gary. B. Discussion of street name change of River Street dash Community Development Director, Gary Carter.
I'll catch you up on the narrative of this so far. Kim and Paul came to me a couple of months ago or asking about what it would take to possibly change names of River Street and River Road to one continuous street and it be named Water's Edge, right? Yes, Water's Edge, sorry. I keep -- I've been saying River's Edge all day. And name it -- and rename it Water's Edge. I told them if they wanted to do that, then I would help them go through the process. They've appeared before the planning commission twice now. The city council wants to pitch their idea. They've contacted, and the letter that you got there just kind of gives you the narrative of what they've done up until this point. So, it's on the agenda as a discussion item. They're both here if you've got questions for them. Staff is taking -- not taking -- there are advantages to doing it, and of course, you can see there's one person that has vocally opposed it, that they've put here in their letter. And typically, I think we -- the city has had a policy to not change something if -- well, I think it's mostly whenever we close an alley, but if one person's opposed to it, you don't do it. But Dan Hawke also spoke about at the planning meeting, the advantages of renaming something for redevelopment purposes. And so, it's just -- it's out there on the table. You guys are here to make these calls, not necessarily me. Like I said, I could see advantage, disadvantage, both ways. Staff doesn't take a stance on it at this time, but I've been supportive of what they've been trying to do. It's the right way to do it. Instead of just coming and demanding that something happened, they've gone about it the proper way. And if there's another step you'd like them to take, I'll help them do that. But at this time, I suppose, if you have any questions for them, or Kim, or Paul, or whoever, and there are people that own -- are stakeholders in that neighborhood, if they maybe want to speak to, I don't necessarily know what the proper process is for this. But.
Well, this is a discussion item only, anyway. But Mr. and Mrs. Gregg, would you like to add anything?
We would absolutely -- you can see at the bottom of the letter, we would absolutely love to see this come to fruition. I mean, it's a large step for that area. We've worked hard, not just this half here, but for many, many, many years, to see something happen positive down there. And it has. It has. It's great. It's still a lot of support, and we're still kind of working on that. This road name change would be a large benefit to not only our mindset, because I know that the majority of you, if you say River Street, River Road, everybody's got this little thing in their head that they don't want to go there. That's the community's idea. So, we just -- we know in our hearts that it would make a large impact, and we just really hope that you see that the same way we do, and see what we're doing down there, and see the positive goal that the name change could add to it.
Name changes have to go before the planning commission?
They would recommend one way or another, and then they don't necessarily have to approve it.
They don't approve it. The council approves it, but.
Correct.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Would it be possible to get signatures from the residents or property owners currently on River Street who are in favor of this name change?
Probably. You can see on the letter I wrote, you can see the -- there are -- if you go down to this, there are only nine properties.
Right.
That are there that the owners actually live.
Yes.
The rest are, you know, rent -- you know, we rent them out or we remodel them, or they're vacant lots. The majority is vacant lots that -- if that's necessary, that's what you require, then certainly, I would definitely attempt to do that. Some of them are out of state. Some of them, you never see.
Yeah.
We cleaned up because they're -- they don't care.
Gotcha.
No, that we actually have to care the property ourselves.
Yeah.
So, we have permission that I can do that. I can do my best if that's what you require.
The 26 properties that are vacant lots, are they absentee owners also?
The majority. Two of them belong to the city. Three of them belong to the city. The majority are rundown -- if you go down the river, the majority are on the left-hand side is the riverside lots. And either they belong to the property that's across the road, or they are just very, very small lots that people own to have an address in the city.
Hey, Kim, on your list, where does the church fall? And I know they're in support of it, but.
As far as unoccupied.
Oh, okay.
And they are in very much support of this and decision. We have had a petition between them, but the area, they were just very spurious.
I worked here as a police officer for about 18 years, so I've got a pretty good idea of what some of the stigma is. We're talking, even with a name change, the stigma will still be. So, what my recommendation would be, work with community development. Like I told you guys, go forward. Let us know some issues and things that are going on down there, because it's a new day in community development.
I agree.
And if not, it's going to be very soon.
I agree. I think Gary's doing a wonderful job, and I think the whole city's trying to do to improve the city. But I think the name change itself will help some of the property owners, the investors, feel better about what they're trying to do. I mean, it's like us, we've invested in that property. We've had it for many years. And it's the stigma for us. It is personally for us. And there's some people that have moved in there years ago, and their children, and they say, "We live at River Street." They won't come visit. Their friends won't come visit them. So, I do think it'll make a difference.
Well, it's my hope, no matter how it works out for you guys, I hope you pursue it.
I'm sorry?
No matter how it works out, I hope you continue to pursue it.
But our investment's there. We have to. We have the choice, you know? So, that's -- we would like for the city to come along with us, you know, help us. Help us make our investment a valuable one, and at the same time, make the city a more valuable place to want to visit. I mean, this is -- you know, we just came back from Europe, and the river's on there. And we've always bragged about the American river. You go to Europe, see what they got. This is possible. But you got to want to have it. You got to have an open mind. We got to have -- we got to look for the future. You know, that name change might not happen, might not affect us, you, these people, but it will our children, you know, and their children. It's the future that we need to look for. And this is not -- I mean, it's not going to be perfect in our lifetime or yours, but it's making that step forward. Where are we going to leave our children? We want them to grow up, women with their children, their grandchildren to grow up thinking about River Street? Wipe that out of their mind. You know, give them something tangible down there to say, "Please, hurry, we were walking down there that people kind of visit." I mean, we have strived for that. We're going to look for the future, not today, as far as belt that goes. And that's what the belt is doing. And I appreciate Gary. Gary's guided us the whole way, but we just need you guys to come and work with us also. So, and I can do whatever you want signatures. I can try my best to get them.
How many of the 56 properties, how many do you all own?
Own? River Road, we own nine. River Streets. River Streets, River Streets is not open. River Street is just one. River Street. So, 10 of the properties.
Okay.
If you'd like to see what we have done ourselves with the help of the police department, you can ask Officer Clay, who's right here, is very familiar with the change in River Street. Officer, did you tell them the calls you guys have made? How long have you had?
I mean, me personally, not just speaking on my shift, it might be me personally. It has drastically changed. We probably have a lot fewer calls down there. I mean, I'll get us a call in a nice, walk clear area. Most of you guys, where I do that, are, you know. I commend what they're doing.
We do, too. We appreciate what you guys are doing, and you're investing in our town.
So, if the -- let me throw this out. If the council isn't necessarily prepared to make a call one way or the other tonight, perhaps if maybe not what Louanna had recommended, just maybe a little bit more feedback from the property owners. And I can put together some information on similar changes to similar areas and in communities that mirror sort of what we have here, and see if maybe that information would help you. Unless, if somebody's willing to pull the trigger one way or another, I'll step back from this microphone and shut my mouth. But if you feel like you need more information, I can absolutely gather more information, and they're willing to get some more things together, too, and then.
Based on what I'm hearing so far, it seems like there would be a little bit more comfort level if we -- if there was a unanimous, you know, to that everybody that lives down in that area would approve of the name change. And I think that's probably the way it's been done in the past, but it is a big step. I mean, there's a lot of things that has to happen with a street name changes. So, based on all the women audience's comment, I think there would be a comfort level if we did. We had a little bit more information.
We've changed two street names since I've been here. Both times, there was one property that it affected, well, one building that had a tenant that it affected each time, and you're talking about a lot more people. So, I understand that side of it as well.
And I understand that, you know, there may be property owners that you won't be able to get in contact with because they live out of state or whatever, and that's fine. But just like the mayor said, it's just a comfort level to see folks that are in agreement with what you're doing with the name change.
All property owners have been notified, as a complaint, they have been all before. If we're only 100% agreement on getting the street changed, we'll just close it down now, because if there's one brick down there, one property owner will not do it. You can drive by and look at it. It's beside the church. Now, if that's the way you want to leave the property, that's fine with us. You want it changed, we make it work to you.
Sir, I did not say 100%. I just think that I and the rest of the council would feel a little more comfortable if we could see this ourselves, maybe in a report form. Not necessarily 100%, but the majority.
You mean like a petition with your name on it?
A petition, an email that says, "Hey, I agree. I want it changed," you know? Because I realize that with some of the owners living out of town, they're not going to be able to sign something. But, you know, if you can contact them through email or a text or whatever, but just bring us something.
All we have is the addresses that the city has registered, or the county has registered for taxes. That's all we have. Some of them are the property addresses, and that's it. You know what I'm saying? I mean, I -- like, there's one across -- we own 501 River Street. Right across from that, we don't own the lot. It's on the river. It belongs to Strange, and so, we send it to their mailing address that the city has for taxes, that the city and county has for taxes. So.
And there's been two public hearings, aren't there?
And there's been -- the people that oppose have made their opposition known. One is called Gary, and that's Lisa Reese. That's right beside the church. And you'll see, if you're driving there, you'll see. You'll understand that situation. He is.
Which side of the church?
If you're going down the river that way, it's the last house on the left side of the church. And if you want to know the situation with that, we purchased her house at tax sale. She has a year to reclaim it. She did not. So, we waited and waited and waited, and we allowed her to have the property back about a year and a half later. And for some reason, she has this bad thought against us, like we did something wrong. We gave the lady's house back to her. We wish we never had. We did not have this problem. So, that's your opposition. Not that she doesn't want the name change. This is her opposition with us. So, just so you -- there's a little background on that.
Okay.
Other people have called, and you've asked Gary, "Do I need to go and change my address?" You know, it's not -- that's your opposition. And other people I've spoken to personally, my -- your manager's here. I don't know if you have opposition? You don't. So, I mean, and everybody else is like, "Go, yes, go." So, I mean, we've had two letters. One letter was sent at a certificate of mailing. So, they've all received the letters. And if they have opposition, they have -- they were notified that the meetings were coming up. Nobody showed up to the meetings. So, the opposition was zero. So, I mean, we can do the third, but that's just a lot more detail. You know, and it's going to be hard to -- it's going to be hard to get those people to, if they don't email us back. If we're not going to write our email, if they don't email us, what's the response by the council for that? I mean.
Well, if you don't get any response, I guess there would be no opposition.
Yeah, be a yes. Be a yes vote.
The two letters, we haven't had any responses, except the one opposition. Same place, what we're doing.
Well, there was like last month with the beauty shop that one of the left out of Vicki Turner, I believe.
Yeah, that if -- I will, I'll say this, that I said we weren't -- the one recommendation I have now is that you go with option no. One? Yeah, one, and take all the main street out of it, so you're only renaming two streets and not part of -- two full and part of three. Because that lady said, and she's on the edge of it, so she could be easily taken off without it.
So, option one is the option that would leave her and her beauty salon.
Correct.
Out of the name change.
We totally agree with that. That wasn't even our idea. That came up as a planning commission. Somebody said, "Why don't we do that?" Okay, you know, so we did what we were asked to do, and that's why we separated the two options. And that we totally understand about that. We feel the same.
Council would feel more comfortable. I am okay with getting with the Greggs one more time and putting together just a little more detailed information, because I understand where -- I understand the trepidation on doing something like that. You don't -- and they're all full of positive things because they've seen it and been on the front lines. But also, I think maybe you guys should understand that what we're just telling them it's okay. Tim, do you want to chime in?
I want to. I want to. But go ahead and finish.
Oh, well, it's been, other than the one lady who is opposed to it, it has been a lot of positive feedback. But it's just them telling you that.
Right.
So, without some sort of something that one of us can sign off on, and I'm comfortable doing that work to give it to you.
Thank you.
It would make that decision easier and with more documentation. I understand that. So, if you guys are okay with that, I can -- and I know exactly sort in my head what we need to put together, but Tim, please do.
Well, my thing is that there's probably nobody faced as many trials and tribulations I have on that riverfront. That's a 12-year grant that we sat there and ended up taking 20 years before we got it done grand. And so, I understand the process that you're going through and everything that it takes here. There's nothing easy to accomplish. This 1,800 feet when we started was a mile. We had $300,000 and was going to be able to do a mile. Then we ended up with 12, 15 years later, with the same amount of money, but only a third of the bill. So, the process is, for me, has been a 20-year process. And the change that has been made for us on the riverfront is being city hall has moved to Newport Utilities and what's happened back here. The TDOT working with us to get underneath the bridge. The property owners that wanted to do joint use agreements to maintain their properties. Purchasing the Phil Owens property and laying out the greenway of the way we've done. This, you know, this didn't happen overnight, just like the road change of every which way council wants to go. It's not going to happen overnight for us that has worked on all of these projects over the years. You know, we're 27 years into it right now. We've got another million dollars, right? And so, we had to change directions because we have those people that are totally against us to connect the properties. So, you know, we got another million dollars, and we've come up with another direction. So, you know, we got another million dollars and we've come up with another direction and that is to come from the east end to the west end instead of going from, you know, to west to east. So we can't get there. So we found other alternatives and the biggest support that we've had has been our city minister, you know, so he's on board with it. He understands, he understands what it's doing for our community. You know, we bought the Old Mill property down here, is another piece of the puzzle. If you don't have a destination, you can't build a greenway, you can't get the money. And so our destination is the Old Mill site and what it meant to do for it when it was developed, as far as the old dam, the bridge, the cliffs, the mills, the, so there's an opportunity there as a destination history. So there's a lot of things that plays into all of this and it's complicated, I know that, because the trials and tribulations I've been through and I'm still being cussed. You were talking about, they felt you were bad about the house.
Yeah.
Hey, it's, go talk to a couple of these property owners and they're going to tell you, don't bring people up here. No tact or diplomacy, you know, but thanks for letting me chime in.
The development of the riverfront is a big deal for Newport and it's an asset that has not reached its full potential and goes right through that neighborhood, so this neighborhood's an important thing and we got to do what's right for the people as well as the city as a whole. So, yeah, if you would be more comfortable letting me get all the information they've gotten from their people, compiling everything they got, putting together some kind of report, if you feel like that'll help you make the decision better, then I'll absolutely do that because I want, I want the best decision made, I want the most informed decision made and I don't want anybody mad at me, so I thought that's the best route. Yeah. I haven't been here long enough, right?
Okay. Is there any further discussion? I think we have come to at least a plan, at least a germ of a plan anyway, so I don't think there's anyone here, Mr. Gregg, that is opposed to what you want to do. I think it's good, probably good for the city, but just to build that comfort level that would be, would be helpful if we had all our ducks in a row, so to speak. So if Gary is willing to take on that task, I think we could reconsider.
I got a day town, it's fine.
Yeah. Yeah. I noticed you sleeping in your office, office every now and then. Okay.
Yeah.
Any further discussion then? Okay. We'll move on. Bids, purchases, and expenses, we have none. We have now moved to the section, comments from citizens. Anyone want to speak?
If you've not seen the Christmas decorations, you need to go look at them. The snowflakes on three twenty-one, twenty-five seventy and plus at Christmas Street, we have a heck of a time out at Christmas Street, so we think we, I think we'll admit, so if you haven't seen those decorations, see them and what they've done here at city hall is gorgeous.
Might get the real snowflakes tonight, too.
Just fine, just fine.
And we will remind everyone about the Christmas parade this coming Saturday, so just to.
One thing I'd like to add, I'd like to thank Tim's folks for all the work they've done getting the Christmas decorations up. And I have had, I'm sure probably you guys have and ladies, lady, but I've had several comments about our newest addition that are the plane talk, you know, years ago, we had, I remember when I was younger, a decoration that went across the street there that kind of welcomed you into downtown during the holidays and we've tried to bring that back with a new piece that we bought last year after Christmas on sale. We try to buy stuff in January, February, when it goes on sale for the following year. And so we bought that piece last year and Tim's guys, they had a real time getting it up down there and it was a challenge for them, but they've got it up and I've had several positive comments from the community about it, especially folks more in our age group that remember that, wanting it used to be there many years ago and that brought back memories for them. So I do appreciate the job they did getting that up. I know it was a challenge for them.
I seem to recall that there was one over in Northport area, too.
Yeah.
At one time.
I think it looks the best, I can recall, my recent memory.
And this does, too. Very pretty.
The girls went to the back and Tiffany and Sarah did the majority of this and she, they enlisted help as needed from wherever they could lay junk. But they went into the back and dug through everything back there and found all these different trees and so they wanted to do a festival of trees and so they put them all out.
Nice job.
Thank you. They also wanted to redo our float for the parade, so.
Yeah.
I haven't seen that yet, but I'm sure they've done a great job on that also.
Yeah, she's kind of been keeping that under wraps.
Comments from citizens? No more comments? If hearing none, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm going to make mine.
Okay. If we have a motion to adjourn, been properly seconded? All in favor? All opposed?